Heather, are you with that?
We are all set.
Okay. Oh, no, here comes Dave. We'll be all set. Good evening, it's now seven o'clock and I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, to order. I'm going to ask, since you, I'm going to assume that most of you have never had the joy of attending a zoning board of appeals meeting with us before, so let me tell you how this works. You are here because you are asking us to take an existing zoning rule and change it for your property, because if you were to obey the consisting rule, you would have particular difficulties in doing so. And that's the feature that we want you to tell us, is what particular difficulties you would have if your request for your variance was not granted. We will ask you to come to the podium and speak as to why you want your variance, and we will, then the board will ask you questions. You will stay at the podium and answer those questions, the best of your ability. We will then go into what we call private, and you will all stay right here in the same room, and we'll discuss your request amongst ourselves. We'll come back out to the public, and we will vote, and you will know tonight immediately whether or not your request for variance has been granted. If it has not been granted, you have the option of going to the court of common, please. Either way, whether it's been granted or not, I strongly suggest that you go to the planning office sometime and make sure that you have the proper paperwork, so that you could go ahead with your requests for variance. If you are going to be testifying tonight, I'm going to ask you to stand now and be sworn in, as this is a coiseable legal hearing, and we have a court reporter who happens to the best one in Northwest Ohio, recording everything you say, so remember, whatever you say is going to be on the record for you, okay? Now, if you're going to be sworn in, please rise and raise your right hand. Doesn't cost anything, so you might as well all, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, consider yourself sworn in. We have a full agenda tonight, we have five variances to go through. So, the first order of business is approval of the minutes from the March 13th meeting. Was there any addition or changes to those minutes? Hearing done, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion for approval of the minutes has been carried. Okay, the first request is that Kimberly Barton, 814 Roscommon Street, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a four-foot-by-15-foot driveway expansion, which would be three feet, five inches wider than the 10-foot maximum width allowed. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, section 150.72 Off-Street Parking A, location of off-street parking number three, where serving a one-unit or two-unit dwelling use, a driveway may not exceed a width of 10 feet, or the width of a garage to which it leads, whichever is greater. Here's an aerial view of the property. Using pictometry, you can see the front of the home, and then the side of the home, this is a corner lot, the rear of the home, and then the other side of the property. Here's a picture of the front of the property, where the existing driveway is. They did get a permit to expand that driveway, to basically pour a parking pad on the side of the home to store a recreational vehicle. That is what part of the request really is for, to fill in the triangular piece that was shown on their site plan within your packet. So filling that piece in would make that width fully go past the house. Here's looking towards the front and the side there, where that driveway and parking pad would go, looking a little closer there on the side, and then another view of the side of the property. Here's a picture that was part of your packet. We did receive one letter that I will read into the record, and actually, I should say that was part of your packet, so you already saw that, but I want to make sure that is noted, "From the neighboring property to the east. To whom it may concern, I am the property owner at 810 Roscommon Street, Bowling Green, Ohio. I reviewed the plans that Matt and Kim Barton submitted. I have no problem with them filling in the additional space that they are asking for in the variance application. Thank you, Scott Feehan," and then he lists his phone number. Otherwise, we didn't receive any phone calls or any other written correspondence. I did want to note, this is one of those newer facets of our newer zoning code, that I figured we'd probably see a lot of paving, because this is one of the largest changes that really, I feel like, didn't get a lot of discussion during, you know, the several months of public meetings and opportunities to speak. So, this one was a little different, because we've been having more requests to park recreational vehicles or boats on the side of the houses, and so, our code didn't really get that specific. It just basically says, you know, the width of your driveway can be 10 feet, or the width of the garage. So, we felt it was fair to really allow that maximum driveway width of 10 feet, and then being able to park in the side or the rear with that, but filling that whole thing in would make that wider than the house. So, that was my interpretation of the code. You can disagree, obviously, that's why you're a board, able to do that, but again, that's a little bit of background on this request. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required, a site notice was placed at the site, the other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail, to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Is Ms. Barton here? Want to come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then go into why, what particular difficulties you would encounter?
My name is Kim Barton, and what was the other thing?
Your address.
814 Roscommon Street, Bowling Green.
Okay, and now you can tell us why you're requesting this variance?
So, we are requesting the variance to fill in this little bit of triangular space, to make it look completely finished. We already have the approval from the city to do the parking pad next to the garage, as well as the extension driveway that will meet up to our existing driveway that goes into the garage. So this little itty-bitty triangle of space is approximately 26 square feet of additional concrete that we're asking for it to be able to be filled in. But based on the new code that was put into place, we have to apply for this variance to allow us to do that. So that is why we're here.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who is just to address this? Members of the board, do you have any questions or comments?
I've got just a comment. Back in 1970, Hobie and I, probably the only two who might remember that, but Joni Mitchell did a song called "Big Yellow Taxi," and I won't sing it for you, but some of the lyrics were...
We thank you for that.
"Don't it always seem to go? You don't know what you've got till it's gone. They paved paradise and put in a parking lot." That's just kind of seems to be the theme for us tonight, four out of the six of the requests we have are for parking. But that said, I don't have an issue with what you want to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
It seems de minimis for...
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. If there's no other comments, or no, no one's trying to sing, I would invite you to have any comments or questions amongst yourselves, amongst us? Okay, then I'm going to go back into the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion, please.
I will so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any additional discussion?
Yes, who's second?
Chris. All set? All right, will the secretary call the roll, please?
Judy Anis?
Yes.
Kobe Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sackman?
Yes.
Your request for your 26 square feet of concrete has been granted. And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, I should have warned you all about that in the beginning. Once you're done, you're free to leave, since it's going to be a long evening. The second one is Delana Ball, 224 Western Avenue, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a 12-foot-by-27-foot driveway expansion, which would be two feet, eight inches wider than the maximum width allowed, based on the width of the garage to which it leads. Heather?
Under section 150.72 Off-Street Parking, section A, location of off-street parking number three, where serving a one-unit or two-unit dwelling use, a driveway may not exceed a width of 10 feet, or the width of a garage to which it leads, whichever is greater. Here's an aerial view of the property. Using pictometry, you can see the side of the house there, and then the rear of the house, the other side of the home, the front of the house. Here's a picture of the existing driveway there, going to the garage. And you can see by this picture, they could bump it out, according to the code, maybe two feet or so to line up with the garage, but they want to go, obviously, further than that. That's where we got the 10-feet extension. Another view of the front there, more angled where they would like to do the extension. Here's a sketch that was part of your packet, showing that 10-foot number past the garage. We did not receive any written correspondence, or any phone calls, after mailing the letters. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation required, a site notice was placed at the site, the other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail, to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Ball? Want to state your name and address for the reporter, and then you can tell us why you're requesting this variance?
Okay, my name is Delana Ball, and you said my address?
Mm-hmm.
224 Western Avenue, Bowling Green, Ohio, 43402.
Aye.
Well, so, we have two car, personal cars already there. I have a work vehicle, which is not there right now. If you saw on the grass where it was brown, that's because my work, one of my work vehicles was sitting in the grass. So I need to go wider, so I can't, don't park in the grass. And, so that's basically mostly why, yeah, why we're asking this, so. And then when people come over, they can park in the driveway, not in the grass also, so, because I do have people come over and stuff.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
There's no on-street parking on Western, correct?
No on-street parking, there's no sidewalk either.
Is the fence in the back on the property line?
No, it's before the property line. I have quite a bit of property beyond my home, to the right, the side of the garages, so I don't remember exactly how many feet it is, but we're going to have like nine feet, I think, still, that we can go to hit their property line, so...
Heather, how do you determine the width of the garage, 10 feet, or the width of the garage? It's, is it the width of the garage door, or are you going all the way to the corner of the house?
So, how I interpret it is to the corner of the house. We felt like in looking in past permits and our experiences, that most people will pave to the corner of the garage. It's very rare that they would stop right at the garage door, which, also, that leaves space for you to open your car door, and get out of the car, and not step on the grass. So we used, I will call it a common sense approach, in our office, to basically say up to that corner of the house, instead of at the garage. Also, when you look at the auditor webpage, and pull out, basically, a layout, or pull up a layout of people's homes, it'll have that whole box labeled as garage, so it just seemed like that was the best way to interpret that.
Makes sense. It's my understanding that the city administration is considering, looking at changes to the off-street parking standards. It's also my understanding that the residential piece of that is not a priority at this time. The original intent of the planning commission, I assume the city council, when they, they came up with these standards, because they are a lot more strict than they used to be...
Right.
...was to try to keep parking out of the front yard of especially residential uses. So, I've got a little bit of a problem with this. I would, I would suggest something to you, that a standard parking space is 180 square feet. It's either 10 feet by 18 feet, or nine feet by 20 feet. It would be a lot more palatable to me, and I believe in, in line with the intent of the zoning code update, if we were so inclined to, to grant your request, that your total driveway width, in other words, your existing driveway of 10 feet, not go out to what appears to be 22 feet, but to make it consistent with that standard off-street parking space for a total of 18 feet. I think that way you could, you could easily park four vehicles in your driveway, and...
My work vehicle, so I have a, well, I have a van that I drive, but sometimes I have to drive a bigger truck. And so that's kind of why I was trying to go a little more. Also, I don't, but I bought the house a couple of years ago, and then, like a year before, they asked for wider parking and got approved, and unfortunately, they didn't do it. And it was for 20 feet wide.
Say that again?
So, I bought the house about two years ago, it'll be two years July, and the people that owned the house, when was it, in 2019, requested the same thing kind of I'm doing, they requested 20 feet wide, and the, I got two copies of it, I probably should have brought more, but, and it was approved, like I said. I don't know who I'll give that to, but...
So that was approved under the old code?
Correct, exactly. And we were, yes, yes, it was.
Well...
I know it's a different time, I get it, I'm not trying to be... Yeah, I understand that you know that.
When, when we consider these things, we have to listen to you and your explanation for what your practical difficulty is.
Absolutely.
Seven different criteria that we look at, and others if we think it's necessary on a case-by-case basis, and try to determine if we agree that you have a practical difficulty that, that warrants the granting of the variance. And I'm not speaking for anybody else, and if there's a motion eventually made to approve it, and there's discussion, my mind's open, and I would change my mind, but I won't be in favor of granting this as it's requested. I would be okay with the 18-feet total width of the driveway.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'm actually a little opposite, because I, my driveway, I got two big trucks, and it's, I think it's 20-foot, and I can barely open my doors.
Now, modern vehicles, I mean, they're going to quit making cars altogether, SUVs are a thing of making now that everybody wants.
Not, not, yeah.
Everything at 18-foot, you can put a couple of small Honda cords in there, but you're not, not putting my Traverse in there, that's for sure.
I'm pretty sure your parking space is right out front here, nine by...
Yeah, I'm a little tight next to the car next to me, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, getting the door dinged, and I already got a new ding on my new car, I'm not too pleased with, so...
I hear you with that.
My...
Any other comments?
The other thing, I just drove, you know, you drive down that street, about all those driveways, I think there's a lot just single-car, single driveways, and it's just looks, I think it's going to look a little weird, but, you know, it's just...
Well, like my neighbors, they have the driveway, like you're saying, but then they put road pavement down, and that's next to it, you know, the people are doing that kind of stuff there.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, thank you, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else you wish to discuss?
In line with Jay, you can't fit, you know, nine feet's tight. And then, especially if she has a bigger truck, or a bigger van, or anything, any kind of box truck width, you're not putting there.
I see both points, though. I mean, I'm not...
Yeah, I'd be nine by 20, if I'm not mistaken, is a standard off-street parking space.
Under our old code, it was correct, 10 by 18, or nine by 20. The new code doesn't actually have a minimum standard now, but we used to.
I didn't mean zoning code, I meant just in general planning purposes.
Sure, yes.
Okay, I'm going to go back into the public hearing, and I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I just go back to my, my comment about the intent was, of the new zoning code, was to try to keep parking out of the front yards, and I feel like the 18-foot total width would be a good compromise.
Well, we got to go with the code, what it says, we can't, you know, you know, you don't know what's anybody's mind, you can't say that's the intent unless they're here testifying to it.
I, I asked.
Of what's the thing, and you can't go with, you know, that the city's talking about, you know, changing on-street parking, because that's, that can't be applied. You can't even discuss it or consider it, because it's not part of the code.
I did ask about the intent, and that's what I was told the intent was for this part of the code.
Who, who said, well, once again, they're not here to answer any questions, so they can't testify to the intent.
Oh, I can attest, that was a big part of the zoning conversation, why it was proposed that way, because that's what the community said during a lot of the land use planning that we've done over the past 10 years, and most recently. So it was really implementing those recommendations, so that was one of the proposals from our consultant, and it, like I said, it obviously passed, but definitely was to remove parking lots in the front yard that people felt were becoming larger and larger issues in neighborhoods, so that's where it came from.
Can you take it back to an overhead view?
Yes, absolutely.
Plus, if you do go down to only eight-foot, that you won't be that close to the property line either.
Did you mean an aerial view?
Yeah, aerial down shot, please, thank you. The situation, though, too, is, as you...
No way to get to the...
Drive down that neighborhood, you can see that the neighbors have already done their method of improving their width of their driveway by not only concrete, but by stone, and brick, and whatever else. So it's in keeping, if you will, with the intent of the neighborhood.
Yeah, most modern houses have two-car garages, they have wider driveways.
Right.
You know, you're penalizing someone because they bought an older home in Bowling Green, is just, I think, could be damaging, and, you know, if the people don't want to buy those homes, they're going to go, go by the wayside. Because more families have more than one car now.
Any additional discussion?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, will the secretary call the roll, please?
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
No.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sackman?
I will say yes.
Judy Anis?
Yes. Your request for your variance was granted. You're welcome. The next one is Joseph Easterday, 135 Bial Avenue, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a 38-foot, 8-inch-by-9-feet, 6-inch driveway expansion, which would be two feet, 8 inches wider than the maximum width allowed, based on the width of the garage to which it leads, and would encroach six inches in a required three-foot setback to the property line to the north, which was an alley.
Madam Chairman, I request to be recused.
You are, so, your request is granted, thank you.
Heather? Thank you. Again, under section 150.72 Off-Street Parking A, location of off-street parking number three, where serving a one-unit or two-unit dwelling use, a driveway may not exceed a width of 10 feet, or the width of a garage to which it leads, whichever is greater. And also, under number four, all driveways must be set back from all side and rear lot lines by at least three feet, except where a driveway adjoins a driveway of an adjacent lot, the area contained within the setback may not be paved. Here's an aerial view of the property, you can see it's a corner lot on South Prospect and Bial Avenue. Using pictometry, here's the front of the house, and then you can see the garage in the back, that would be the older garage, so this is not updated with the newer garage that he had built within the last year or two. Another view of the property there on the side, looking at the rear yard, and then looking at the front from South Prospect. Again, you can see the alley, and then the existing garage with the driveway. Here's a picture of the front of the house, and here is facing north on South Prospect, so you can see, again, the newer garage, and then the original garage there to the back of that garage, and then the newer driveway that leads to the new garage. Here's a closer-up view of both garages, and then the older driveway, you can see a little better, next to the alley, and that grassy area is the area he would like to fill in. Here's looking down the alley there, and then, again, to that older garage. And then this would be facing south on South Prospect, to give you a view of the property. Here is a sketch that's submitted, that was in your packet, so we tried to, I know it's a little confusing, so we tried to highlight in red that the variance is required for that three-foot setback, so he'll be approximately 30 inches from the alley, and then we tried to highlight in blue that area he wishes to fill in, which would obviously exceed that width between both garages. We did not receive any phone calls or written correspondence. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required, a site notice was placed at the site, the other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail, to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Want to state your name and address, please?
My name's Joseph Easterday, I live at 135 Bial Avenue. I bought a 122-year-old house a few years ago. The original garage was a carriage house. My truck would not fit in it, so I built the new garage. The two garages are 32 inches apart. I would like to rip up the 100-year-old concrete from the carriage house, pour new concrete, and I prefer not to leave 32 inches of grass from the garage to the street. The other thing is, the driveways are 16 feet from, to the street, to the garages, my truck is over 20 feet long. I park indoors, park my motorcycle indoors, but if I wanted to wash my truck, I can't do it in the driveway without parking sideways. Have no intention of using it as off-street parking, unless maybe I have a cookout and somebody comes to visit, and I think it would look a lot better for the neighborhood if I filled in that 32 inches. As far as the six inches to the north, the carriage house is already encroaching six inches, so it's been there over 100 years. I've looked at the fire maps from 1910, and it was there, so...
My, I think it'd look a lot better, I agree. My biggest concern is the height difference in water, where the, where's that water going to go? Is it going to go puddle in that alley?
I can have...
I'm a little concerned about that.
He was going to taper it towards the street and towards the alley, but that old driveway is already by the alley, and it's already lower, so I don't think 32 inches of grass is going to make a whole lot of difference with rain.
You'd be amazed. Can I see the street view?
Yeah, I was going to say, can you go back, Heather, please?
This one, or back further?
One where it shows both in front.
Yeah, from there, so...
That's what I'm talking about.
You're talking about taking the, the concrete, that's what I'm trying to figure out with the drawing, not to the north, but just to the south.
No, the whole thing, Chris.
The whole...
Well, you take out the old pad, but we're not, you're not expanding it to the north, are you?
No, no, well, a couple inches.
Well, I mean, it'll stop at the garage.
The old driveway is only about eight feet wide, and that building, I think, is 18 feet wide, so...
Correct, so the concrete is not going to go north of the garage?
No, definitely not.
So there'll be a grassy area between the garage and the alley?
Yes, a very small grassy area, but yes. There's, in fact, I weeded all the Thursday lilies, I weeded them tonight, so...
So the intent is to fill that entire thing with concrete, all the way to the right edge?
Right, I'm allowed to go, I'm allowed to go two feet wider on the new garage. And I'm allowed to go the width of the old garage, but that's going to leave 32 inches of grass in between. I don't think that would look very aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood.
Well, I was trying to look at the sketch, it looked like, it kind of looked like you wanted to fill that area in between the old garage and the alley with concrete as well.
No, only to the edge of, the north edge of the old garage. Which would be six inches into the right away, but the garage, carriage houses, those are literally all carriage houses in that neighborhood. It was built 1902.
Your intention is to leave the carriage house?
Yes.
And the, just so I'm clear, I think I know the answer to this, but the, the new concrete would not extend past the face of the existing garage? Is that correct?
No, it would go from the edge of the new concrete to the right edge of the carriage house.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. As to Jay's concern about the drainage, I understand that, is it, is it true that excavation in the right of way gets reviewed by Public Works, and they would have some say as to... and they would have some say as to how that new concrete was graded at the right-of-way?
So I'm not sure if they particularly look at that, but they would have to approve excavating in the right-of-way permit.
Yeah, I had to do that with the new garage. So I've already filled all the paperwork out. I brought it here, and one of your employees looked at it, went back in the office. He said, well, you could have done this last spring, but this 32 inches is a problem.
I understand.
Any further questions or comments? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Discussion, gentlemen, and members ourselves. Well, hearing none. I will come back into the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion, please.
The variance be approved as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Will the secretary call the roll, please?
Julianis?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sackman? Yes. Do I call Hobie or not?
Your request for your variance has been granted, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Number four is Dominic Stutzman, on behalf of Black Swamp Players, has requested a variance to allow the construction of 14.55-foot by 46.64-foot driveway expansion, which would encroach 3 feet into the required 3-foot rear yard setback to the property line to the east at 115 East Oak Street. Heather?
Under section 150.72, off-street parking A, location of off-street parking, number four, all off-street parking areas, including any vehicular accessways and any applicable parking lot perimeter landscaping strips, must be set back from all lot lines by at least 3 feet, except where an off-street parking area joins an off-street parking area of an adjacent lot. In this aerial view, you'll see that they actually own three kind of strange parcels, so I have those highlighted. In this circumstance, the only portion of the encroachment would be on the east property line. Using pictometry, here's the front of the property. Looking at the side of the property, the rear of the property, and then the other side of the property. Here's a picture of the front. Here's a picture looking at the west side of the building, and, you know, no improvements there. I just wanted to show you the, obviously, different angles of the property. The parking lot that they're doing does not require any variance. It's just that driveway, again, that would encroach in the setback. Here's looking at the existing driveway. They wish to extend there to the back parking area. Here's a closer-up view of that driveway and, again, that rear yard. Another closer view of that rear yard. And then this is just looking towards the back of the property, to give you an idea what that looks like. That's where the small parking area would go. And then here's another view of that property at the back, looking a little more around, so you can see the whole yard. And then here's the back corner of the property, and you can see there's a stake mark there. And again, that back lot line complies with the 3 feet. Again, it's just the east portion that would not. We actually did receive letters that I have in part of your packet. And I'm sorry, I'm going to skip here. I want to skip the picture. So again, here in your packet is the sketch. We highlighted where the encroachment would happen with the driveway. Again, those additional parking spaces in the parking lot would comply. They are putting a 6-foot wood new privacy fence in the back there. It's not required, but they are doing that. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And again, I'll read these letters. So we received a letter on April 1st, 2024, from an adjoining property owner. It's on Sterns and Hammer letterhead. It's addressed to the Bulling Green Board of Zoning Appeals, care of the Planning Department, and our address of 305 North Main Street, regarding 115 East Oak Street. To whom it may concern, I have no objection whatsoever to the variance requested by Dominic Stutzman on behalf of the Black Swamp Players. The work they've completed thus far at 115 East Oak Street has been a welcome improvement to the surrounding neighborhood. I urge you to grant them whatever flexibility they need to continue that work and allow them to make the highest and best use of their property. Regards, Jeffrey J. Dennis, Member 112 Oak LLC. The second letter you have in front of you actually is an email from Nate Spitler. We received that Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, 8:59 a.m. Went to the Planning Department, copied me, Heather Saylor, regarding the Black Swamp Players to the Planning Department. On behalf of Spitler Properties and SVH Partnership, we have no objection to the setback encroachment requested by the Black Swamp Players. Thank you. Nathaniel E. Spitler. The third copy is actually a letter that we sent out to adjoining property owners, and then Mecca Management, who it went to, they put a handwritten note on the letter and then emailed it to us. We received that today, April 10th, 2024, at 1:45 p.m. It went to the planning@bgohio.org email, and it's addressed to Heather and Jamie. We are not opposed to this variance. We support the Black Swamp and the improvements they are making. Steve Green, Mecca Management, and then he leaves his phone number. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Sir, please state your name and your address.
Dominic Stutzman, 8241 Foncrest, Tullio, Ohio.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. All right.
We are requesting variance to extend the existing drive. The distance between the property line will remain the same. We're required to keep that distance only for turn width, as well as not creating an awkward space of grass or other material up against the building. We determine that it'd be best to keep one direction travel through the area based off of the size of the lot. That's why we're requesting variance.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, comments?
Well, I noticed that the rental property next to it has vehicles parking in part of that area proposed. Are they going to be parking in those spots that are behind that rental property?
They currently do. I assume they would continue to do so. We wouldn't be taking up any of that space from them.
You know, they're tearing down that garage just back to the yellow one?
Correct. The old shed that was shown in the pictures, the yellow one, would be removed.
For the record, I'd like to ask, have you made an effort for water runoff and retention?
Correct, yes. We actually have proposed catch basin on the site. City engineering did review it, and it has some oversized piping to create detention for the facility and capture most of the runoff. That way, we're not creating a problem with our neighbors and pushing water onto their properties, so we should be capturing it. Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. I'm going to now close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have any comments among yourselves?
It was my understanding that we would have an opportunity to-
You certainly may come up, I will go into the public- And were you sworn in, sir?
Pardon?
Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. You want to state your name and address, please?
Les Barber, 303 North Prospect Street.
Okay.
My wife, Sue, and I, our property butts this on the north, the lot line on the north. And we wanted to say a couple of things about this. One is that we're very happy to have the Black Swamp Players as a neighbor, and we're also very pleased that they're going to replace the existing fence, which is somewhat decayed. But we have a, we have a question we'd like to ask. What kind of plans, if any, the players have to control access to this new lot? Because the area has four rental properties immediately around them. One is on Oak Street, the other three are on North Main Street. And those three in particular, or two of those three, have no official parking of any sort. They're all student rental, those three. Those four, no, three of them, no, four. So the kids park and what would have been the lawn, if there was any lawn left. And it's our fear that if there isn't some plan to control access to that parking lot, that pretty soon, kids are going to be parking in there. Either the, either the folks who are living in those rental properties or their friends who come to visit, or in addition, the people who come from the bar who is, that is really just across Oak Street from. So, you know, we're just asking. I mean, is there a plan to control that access?
I think that is the best answer you've got on that question.
Yep. Actually, the plan that's up there now, we do plan to put in a no parking or private parking tollway zone signage up in the alleyway where you'd enter from, as well as a do not enter sign from the street view driveway. That way, we don't have people accessing it, but that was certainly a concern that they brought to me as well when we went through the design process. They obviously get parking filling up along the street there very often, so when they do have people coming to the Black Swamp Players Club, parking fills up quickly with only street parking available. They sometimes have to park fairly far away, which was the purpose of the improvement. But they will do their best to limit outsiders going to the private parking area.
Thank you.
There's numerous local tow companies that you can contract with, and they'll be happy to remove any unwanted vehicles, I'm sure.
Yeah, because- Thank you, gentlemen.
You think that will be sufficient? Because my experience is that that doesn't deter the kind of people we're talking about.
One of the questions, but that goes along with what Les was saying. You're going to put the signs up, but is there a plan to actually contract with someone that will enforce it? It's easy to put a sign up, but if you don't take the next step, there's no resolution to it.
I would defer to the owner on that one. I'm his representative, but I do not know if he has plans to make a contract with a tow company to specifically, you know, deal with that problem if it becomes a problem. It might be something they do down the road if it does become a habit of people to park there, but I do not know that.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen. Both of you, thank you.
I just wanted to add that I think that it would be very smart of them to put some kind of gate there, which they could control for their own members when they need to use it, and otherwise, it would keep poachers out. So.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to come back. We are in the public hearing now. May I have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is discussion?
I think it sounds like the players have made some accommodation for the barber's concerns, and I don't think it's a whole lot different than other areas of town. I appreciate your concerns, and I know you've lived there for a long time and have done a lot for that neighborhood, too, so. But I also think there's some, some good community support for this project and that the other neighbors have stepped up and spoken in favor of it. So I would, I would have no problem with-
Johnson?
I was just thinking that, you know, yes, the idea, the program's a good program. I do feel that we have a responsibility to neighborhood concerns as well. And I would like, at least the record to indicate that we are urging that upon discovery that this is going to be a situation where unauthorized vehicles are parked, that the players would act accordingly to prohibit that from happening.
And that's agreeable. Okay. Let the record show that he was shaking his head yes, instead, yes, it is agreeable. Okay. Anything else? Will the secretary call the roll, please?
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sackman? Yes. Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Julianis?
Yes. Your request for your variance has been granted with a strong suggestion. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. Number five. Sarah Neeson, on behalf of Ashland Bancroft LLC, has requested a variance to allow the construction of two signs, 15 by 3 square feet and 24 by 13 square feet on the gas canopy at 525 North Main Street, which would exceed the maximum of three signs per lot with a total of five signs. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, section 150.84, sign regulations table. I know it's hard to see here, but you will see that the zoning is mixed-use neighborhood, and this table lists the type of signs permitted. And then the next column is the number of signs per lot, and it's a three maximum. Here's an aerial view of the property that's on the corner of West Mary Avenue and North Main Street. Using pictometry, you can see the structures there on the lot. You can see the existing pylon sign. And in your packet, please note that they actually are allowed to reface that sign. It's not part of the variance request. I just wanted to show you all the existing signage. Here's the rear of the property. The other side of the property. And then the front of the property. Here's a picture. You can see, again, the pylon sign, and then there's a wall sign. And then the canopy currently doesn't have any signage on that, so they would be allowed, under the current code, to add a sign to one of the sides of the canopy. Here's a closer view of that existing sign on the wall. And then here's a view of the property that would be facing south on North Main Street. And that side of the canopy, it kind of shows you basically the side in the front where they would like to add the signs. That would be the fourth and the fifth sign. In your packet, I basically created just a real quick summary of the property to try to explain it as clear as I can. So I tried to label sign one being the pylon, which had a variance back from July 8th of 1987, which is 40.01 square feet. And then sign two is the wall sign. That's nine square feet. And then the proposed signage would be a sign three on the canopy, which is 15.3 square feet. That, again, could be approved. And then we were naming sign number four, the canopy sign on the east side, which would be 24.13 square feet. And then sign number five would be the canopy side on the south side, which would be 15.3 square feet. So the proposed total sign aggregate is 103.74 square feet, which does comply with the mixed-use zoning, which would be a maximum of 136 square feet. I did fix that and give you a copy. I had a typo in your packet. I had 336 square feet, and it's actually 136 square feet. But again, not asking for variance on that. I just wanted to lay out all of the requirements, so you had those in front of you. Here is a compilation of the items in your packet. So basically, I did an aerial map circling the signs and then numbering them, again, to try to help make it all clearer. The wall sign, the pylon reface they applied for, and then the canopy signs. And then here's the rendering of the canopy signs. That was in your packet. We did receive one email from a neighbor that I will read into the record. It's from Mary Natvig, and it was received on Sunday, April 7th, 2024, at 1:57 p.m. It went to the Planning Department email. Subject, variance change. I am not able to come to the meeting on April 10th, but I am registering my strong no to the change of the variance that would allow additional signs to the property at 525 North Main Street. Yours, Mary Natvig. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Well, you're clearly not Sarah, so.
I am not Sarah, no.
Would you please introduce yourself with your name and address, please?
And do you want my Bulling Green address, or would you prefer the company address?
No, I want your address, your personal address.
My name's Scott Newman, and I'm from 1598 Seven Kellogg Road here in Bulling Green. Essentially, what we're asking for is just approval. To give you a little background, Marathon currently has branded about 4,500 stations. They're going across their whole footprint of territory and upgrading the image to bring it around to a cleaner, more modern look, trying to get rid of some of the mismatch of canopies, which also includes what was formerly- of canopies, which also includes what was formerly my old location, which is a canopy that goes clear back to, I believe that was put up in 1987, is when that canopy was installed. So it's, it's an older image, and Marathon has a lot of mismatch of images and stuff that way on their canopy fascias. So we're just trying to get things back into a uniform, consistent look across the whole brand. The company that I currently am working for, we've got about 1,400 locations that we're trying to do, and, and we're working through that territory, and this Bowling Green location is one of them. You know, the, the ask is, is, you know, yes, it's, it's more signs, but it's all inconsistency with the fascia of the canopy, getting the two, the, the smaller square footage or the, the Marathon button logos that would be on each end of the canopy to give exposure coming up and down Main Street. And then the, the final piece of it is the, the Marathon block letters across the, the front face, which runs parallel to Main Street.
Thank you. Heather, did I understand you to say they still have the availability of another sign on the canopy?
No. So, under the current zoning code, they could do one sign on the canopy.
Okay.
My concern is, they're illuminated, and being in a neighborhood, how's that gonna affect the neighborhood and the, the houses that are around it to enjoy their homes with this big sign, lighted signs, you know, glaring at them?
And have you had an opportunity, and I'm, I'm asking this in sincerity, to see any of these canopies that are illuminated? It's pretty low lumen. They're not bright. They don't, they're not meant to shine and illuminate driveway or, or across properties or anything that way. They're just a backlighting, including the logos and stuff that way. They're, they're not excessively bright. I would say the canopy lights that are lighting up the dispensers are far brighter than what this sign is gonna.
They're pointing down and not into somebody's window, you know? Even if it's not illuminated, you're gonna still see that in your home.
They, yeah, but they're, they're not excessively bright at, at night, so, yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
Excuse me. And I'll spare you my rendition of sign, sign everywhere, a sign, too.
Thank you.
One of the things we have to find is the practical hardship. Talked about that earlier, and I'm not quite getting that. Can you address that part of this?
It's, it's mostly, again, going back to consistency and uniformity of, of, across the Marathon brand, of just trying to get all these locations to match one another for brand recognition is, is primarily the, the whole goal behind the way they've got these canopy fascias set up.
And that's, that's the hardship. That's the only.
That's a particular difficulty?
Pardon me, the practical difficulty. I gotta tell you, you know, signs have been an issue in Bowling Green for a long time, and this location, as you're very well aware, has had five variances over the years, and three of those have been for signs, and I just kinda have a hard time with this. I don't, I don't really see that. I get what you're saying. It'd be nice to have all your canopies look alike across the country, but, you know, we're, we're Bowling Green, Ohio, and that's, that's not really consistent with what I think the city has tried to do over the years with signs. And again, I'm just not seeing the practical difficulty that, that would be created by not having the variance granted. So I'm, I just have a little hard time with this. Again, my mind's open. If a, a motion's made, I'm certainly willing to listen to my fellow board members, but that's. If the pylon sign was rebranded, so they would see that coming down Main Street from either direction, because it's sideways there, there's your branding. And if you put one on the face, that's facing Main Street, there's your third sign, you're authorized. Why isn't that covering your branding? Because the two sides, you're just gonna see one little, and then your pylon sign, which is your main sign.
And the pylon sign is actually restricted somewhat when driving up and down Main Street because of the telephone pole columns and the telephone and cable lines that run directly in front of it. It's, it's always been something, and I'm very familiar with that. After we put up that sign, I was extremely disappointed with the exposure that that got because of.
I live real close to there, and I can see it when I drive up and down through there. Even with the power line going across it, I understand that that's a Marathon every time I see it. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, hearing done. Let's close the public hearing. Thank you. Comments?
The biggest problem I have is they're illuminated. You're in a mixed-use area with homes around it. Even if they aren't bright, once you get in, you're gonna see it reflected through your house. And I'm not sure if, I mean, brand recognition, you know, maybe it's nice, but I'm not sure if that's a hardship. I mean, signs have been changed, different locations because of sizes, because of location.
I feel that, I understand why Marathon wants to have all their stories branded, but I also know, in the corporate world, there are places where things are not done fully in, in that branding. My concern is, this has been, I guess, a service station that has good reputation, been there for a long time. People are aware of it, where it is. And I'm concerned about the lighting that might interfere with the housing that is adjacent to it. It's easy to see that it's a service station from any direction you come, and so I would have that concern.
Anything else?
I'm on the opposite on the lighting. I think it's actually better. I'd rather go to a well-lit place at night than having one that's not well-lit myself, for safety reasons.
Oh, yeah, it's attending the station. I'm talking about the neighbors living around it being, you know, the light pollution.
What curtains are for.
Well, the, the downlighting is there. The, adding the additional illumination along a canopy doesn't really do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we're gonna come back, and I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
I move. Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Question.
Question? Okay. Will the secretary call the roll, please?
Let's start with Rod Noble.
No.
Chris Ostrowski?
No.
David Flager?
No.
Jay Sackman?
Yes.
Judy Anis?
No.
Obie Johnson?
No.
Your request for your variance was not granted. You have the option of going to the Court of Common, please. Okay. The sixth and final request for a variance. David Beblow, on behalf of Precision Alloy Services, Inc., has requested a variance to allow the construction of a 65-foot, 8-inch by 200-foot addition warehouse, which would provide four street, four street trees instead of the required nine street trees, based on the 350 feet of frontage on the lots. One street tree required per 440 linear feet. And to, to ride four trees at the western lot line instead of the required large buffer, a strip of land 30 feet in depth with at least five canopy trees per 100 feet of length, and at least 20 shrubs per 100 linear feet, between the IE Innovation and Employment zoning at 726 Innovation Drive, which is adjacent to the A1 Agriculture and A Institutional, based on 350 feet. The large buffer requirements would be 18 canopy or evergreen trees, four ornamental trees, and 70 shrubs. Heather?
Thank you. Under Section 150.78, titled "Street Trees," A, except for lots in the Central Business District or the Bowling Green Gateway District, which have parking areas fronting Main Street or Worcester Street, and are regulated by 150.72D. For any new development or expansion of existing building by more than 20% GFA, street trees shall be planted at a rate of one tree per 40 linear feet of frontage. A lot less than 40 feet of frontage shall be required to a minimum of one street. So this is actually a new portion of our code also. In this case, the addition would exceed the 20% of the GFA for kicking in this requirement. The other section is Section 150.80, buffering. Under A, buffers are strips of land that provide insulation between incompatible neighboring land uses. Insulation is provided in the form of vegetation. Earth and mounds are opaque fences. Under B, a buffer shall be provided as set forth in the buffer requirements by zone or district, Table 26, for any new development or an expansion of an existing building by more than 20% of GFA. Buffer yard categories of small, large, and mounding are defined in this section. And under C, buffers shall be located along the outer perimeter of the lot, parallel to and extending along 100% of the shared lot lines. Buffers may be broken where vehicle accessways connect one lot to an adjacent lot. This is also a new requirement in the newer zoning code. And this kicks in because, again, that exceeds the 20% of the gross floor area for this addition that's proposed. Also, under 150.8, continuing the buffering section, in this situation, under F, a large buffer would be required, and it reads, "A large buffer shall consist of a strip of land adjacent to the boundary of two zones or districts. The strip of land shall be 30 feet in depth. The strip of land shall be planted with at least five canopy or evergreen trees per 100 feet of length, at least four ornamental trees per 100 feet of length, and at least 20 shrubs per 100 feet of length." Table 26, buffer requirements by zone or district table. Again, the L is for large, and so when you look at the left of the chart, that is the zoning or district of the proposed development. In this case, it's the IE Innovation of Employment. And then if you look at the top, that's the zone or district of the lot adjacent to the proposed development. In this situation, it's institutional, and it's also agricultural. I created this aerial view in your packet to try to help explain this a little better with the parcels and the zoning. So you'll see to the west is where the institutional zoning is, so that's Municipal Court, and then there are adjacent fields there that the Parks and Rec Department uses. And then there's an additional parcel to the south that's zone agricultural. I highlighted there, along that western property line, where the buffering would kick in for that Section 150.80. And then I highlighted there, along the frontage, where the street trees would be required per that Section 150.78. Here's an aerial view of the property showing the two parcels that the business does occupy of the building. Here's a bit of a closer view, just to try to show the different properties there. And then using pictometry, you can see the side of the property, so that would be facing And here's the same side of the property, a little closer in. Here is the back of the property. The other side of the property. And then looking at the front of the property from Innovation Drive. Here's a picture, so this would be facing north on Innovation Drive, heading towards their building. Here's a little closer-up view there of the side of the building in the front. This is looking directly on at the front. And this picture is more looking at the side of the building, so you can see where that addition's going. And then here's a view of the back of the property, so this would be basically parked at the Municipal Court in the back of that building, and then looking towards their building. And then here's trying to get a little further out to see the whole property. Here is a site plan that was in your packet. On this view, I tried to highlight the proposed street trees, so they do want to provide some sort of landscaping to soften the area. We did receive one email from an adjoining property owner. It's from James Hindley or Hindley. I'm not sure how to say that, so I apologize. Received Friday, March 29th, 2024, at 2:18 PM. It went to the planning department email. Subject was the variance for Precision Alloy Services, and it says, it's addressed to me. Heather, we at Hindley Electronics have no issues with the requested variance for Precision Alloy Services. We hope all goes well with their new addition. Jim Hindley, Hindley Electronics, Inc. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the Ministry of Code are posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail, to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owner. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name is David Beblow. I'm president of Precision Alloy. My address is 9140 Whispering Hill Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio. I have with me representatives from Tullamon Construction, the president and the project manager. They built the building in 2018. We did an addition in 2021. You might have noticed the first photos she showed were a little shorter than the second photos, so the second photos had the addition on. And we're looking to do another addition this year to use the maximum space that we're allowed on the lot. You know, obviously, the rules have changed midstream here. We're in an industrial park. Nobody has a complaint with the existing trees and shrubs in the, in the park as it So, you know, the rules are changing, and so the expense to add the trees and the shrubs would be ongoing as far as care and maintenance of the trees, as well as planting of the trees. And in some cases, the trees would be detrimental. For instance, when there was a fire at Hindley, which is across the street, you know, the, the public authorities from Bowling Green actually came to our building and accessed all our cameras, which if there were too many trees, the, you know, the camera's visibility would not have been able to show them what they were looking for whenever they, whenever there was a fire across the street. So we're looking for a more practical amount of trees to, to suit the current state of the industrial park. And I don't know if you have anything to add?
I hope they don't need your camera for fires anymore, huh?
I hope so, too, and I think they do, too.
Heather, would you put up the overhead picture of the property? I was out there and looked at it. It's deep into your, maybe the fourth, fifth picture, and keep going. That's good. I just wanted to be able to, where the shadow is, is where you're planning to do the addition.
That's correct. So the, the first addition went out the back, and so we currently go to within, I believe the setback is 30 feet from where the soccer field is. So if we did, in fact, plant 30 feet of trees, we would use every inch of space at the back of the building. But the new addition is going where the shadow is, on the north side of the building, I believe. Yeah, the north side. You've got a net up there for me.
That's correct. And so can you tell us where, you are proposing a compromise of the number of plantings? Is that what I hear?
Yes. We would like to plant less and to require less upfront expense and less maintenance, and we'd like to plant smaller. The architect told me that they, there's also some rules on the size of trees. We'd like to plant fewer littler trees so that they might grow and let nature do its course. So we were proposing four trees in the front and four trees in the back. You know, we can be a little bit flexible on that. You know, we just didn't see the need to make this look like a park that's an industrial building.
Yeah, most, I drove out there, I don't know, today or yesterday, and, you know, most of the other places do have a lot of trees going down the boulevard, and yours and Fastenal, Fastenal has three, I believe, in the, in the front of theirs, and you have, like, one, I think.
Yeah, we originally planted four, and three of them didn't make it, so.
So, I mean, I, I'm okay with the amount of trees that you're proposing, myself. I, I do believe there needs to be some trees out there.
I agree.
Because it kind of does look a little out of place, not having trees with all the other trees there.
I appreciate your comment about the change midstream, but understand that the, the old code was written back in 1975, and the new code, even though it was unfortunately midstream for you, does incorporate some modern-day planning principles, and these things were, were pretty well thought out, in my opinion. When we consider these variances, as I kind of alluded to earlier, there, in the, in the zoning code, there are seven criteria that we, the code says that the zoning board, zoning board of appeal shall consider, and there are other things that we might consider on a case-by-case basis. I'm not gonna go through each one of those, but I want you to understand at least my thinking on this, so that you're clear where I'm coming from. The first one is that will the property yield a reasonable return? As a practical difficulty matter, I don't really see that. You're planning a 13,000-square-foot addition, so I'm hoping that businesses- so I'm hoping that business is pretty good for you. The second one is the variance substantial. And I think in this case, there's probably not much argument that, given the new standards that we're operating under, this is pretty substantial, going from, you know, a proposed or a required standard of a 30-foot buffer with 70 shrubs and 18 trees down to four trees. That's substantial. And then the other one, you know, the four out of the nine trees that are required on the other part of Innovation Drive there. The third one I'll talk about is that will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered? My big concern there is that you guys aren't that intensive of a use, but in the future, you may not always be there, and there could be a much more intensive use come into that site. And my concern is for the institutional parcel adjacent to the Municipal Court, and particularly those athletic fields that kids use to play soccer. I think it's important for us to consider that and to make some provision to be sure that there's screening, buffering, as anticipated by the code. And I just don't think that what you're proposing with four trees is going to get it. If you can't tell by now, you can probably guess where I'm leaning on this. I, again, cannot speak for the other board members, but as a suggestion, you might be able to bring me on board with this. You might be able to. If you were to request the board to table this and go back and take a look at it and consider some things like, maybe we don't need the whole 30-foot buffer. Maybe you can do some mounding, not for that whole 350-foot property line, maybe some intermittent mounding with some shrubs on top and some trees in between to accomplish mitigation for my concern about that institutional zoning adjacent to you. You know, a little better job, a little better landscape plan, as it were. Show us locations, species of trees. I think our city arborist would probably be happy to work with you on something like that. And just give us something a little bit more palatable to work with.
Well, I believe one of the criteria on that list is, you know, what was expected when we purchased the property as well. So I believe the change, you know, was not what we expected when we purchased the property. We're trying to move forward. We've already delayed the project to, you know, try to reach some kind of compromise here. We're not saying we don't want to plant any trees. They did plant just recently a couple of trees in the back of the soccer field. And what we had proposed were maple trees because we realized the leaves are going to end up on the soccer field as well. So, you know, we didn't... There's some aspect that, you know, if we could come out of today with some resolution to decide whether we're going to move forward, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I'm opposed to holding this up. I think the design of the city is a little excessive and for the location that we're talking about. And I would like us to consider that we continue on with the discussion.
My question was, when looking at the murky, you was talking about the trees that didn't survive. Are those trees that didn't survive being replanted? These are additional to those trees? Or those trees, part of that count, the replacement of the trees that didn't make it?
I haven't thought that far ahead, so if you'd like them to be in addition, they can be.
That would be... That would be preferable.
We'll put them in the back, so that we're... The other problem in the back is there's a... You were talking about mounding, but part of the 30 feet is a swale between the soccer field and the back of the building. So, you know, it would be hard to to move dirt back there as well and create a mound right next to the swale, the drainage swale.
That was just an example of an idea that you might come back to us with.
So you're only...
Before I finish, and I'm not suggesting that the board hold this up. I'm suggesting that, at least from my way of thinking, you might improve your chances of getting this approved on a lesser... A lesser... More palatable to you than what the standard is. In other words, not requiring the entire 18 trees and 70 shrubs. You know, come back with something less... Let's compromise and make it work for everybody.
Yeah, if you were to replace those trees that are dead and use their addition to it, I'd be much more comfortable with it. Just including those dead trees as part of the count.
I think that needs to be understood, that you're going to replace the trees that are dead. And then the other, the number that you're adding, the four addition, are in addition to the ones that are dead. It would look aesthetically.
So would you like those spread in the back or in the front? Or you're leaving that up to our discretion? Or, you know, I don't know how this works, so if we can reach...
You're placing the trees that are dead in those exact spots.
Just put them where the dead trees were. Just put...
And then expand those.
And then move the four other trees we were going to put in the front to the back. So eight trees in the back and replace the four trees in the front?
Part of what I'm having a problem with, I agree with Rod. They did a lot of looking at how we want things to grow and look. And that area isn't always going to be completely industrial. It's also institutional, where they could put some stuff there. There's soccer fields back there. To say I'm going to put eight trees when the requirement was much larger, larger along with shrubbery and stuff like that, is really not, to me, a good compromise. I agree, maybe we don't get it 100% right. But I think you need to come back with a bit more than that, especially when you had three that you planted and two died, and nothing was replaced over time. So I think that there is a need to be a little more substantial for what's going to happen around that area in the future also.
Well, I want to clarify this point first, though. Yeah, I would be, yeah, replace the trees that expired and then add those additional trees. I wouldn't say necessarily in the back, but wherever they would work. That's what I would be fine with, because I would count those trees as the current count, not an addition.
Right, yeah. They would not be in addition if you... They would be what you had said you were going to plant, but you really need to revitalize the trees that died by planting.
Buying the additional age.
So, you know, are we... You know, am I able to say, you know, we can do, we'll do 12 trees and eight shrubs and spread them out?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you are.
We will do 12 trees total, including the ones that were...
If you want to amend your variance to say that, yes, you may.
Replace the four, put in eight new trees and eight new shrubs. Is that... And we'll spread it out so that they can grow and fill in the area.
Yeah, it'd be amenable to that.
Yeah.
Are they full-size trees? Are you still making the small trees?
Legitimate question.
Well, you know, I don't... I think, I don't know what the diameter was that was in the book. Somebody, I think, said four inches, but, you know, I'm thinking, you know, six, eight-foot trees. You know, not great big ones that you got to pay $1,000 and get a tree.
I think he's talking about a full growth.
The ultimate growth of the tree.
Not the current size.
We're thinking maple trees, that are full-size maple trees.
What you have to be careful of is if you get them too big, they don't root, and so you'll lose them later, so.
We have a lot of drainage, you know, coming into the swale from the downspouts.
They're going to be ornamental trees. They're going to be a maple, oak, blended, whatever, a standard tree.
I think it's more worth a maple tree compared to a Japanese maple tree.
Thank you. That's an ornamental.
Yeah, we're thinking normal maple trees.
Okay, so you're going to amend your request, correct?
Yes.
For clarification, sir, would you please tell us exactly what you are amending?
Yes, I need to restate that.
So we will replace the four trees from the front that are... One's still alive, but barely, so we'll replace four new trees up front. We'll add eight maple trees, and we'll add eight shrubs.
And is there a location for those?
I would assume all the shrubs would go in the back. We'll put eight shrubs in the back, six maple trees in front, six maple trees in back. That's counting the four that were there. So four plus two in the front, six new in the back, and eight shrubs.
So for the record, I would prefer that our city arborist be in agreement with the maples. So I don't know if we can, you know, not word it so it's a specific type. I mean, if you want some qualities to the tree, that's fine, but our city arborist does give the tree types.
If you could amend your...
I would say 12 trees with agreement with the Bowling Green Arborist.
Just amend your request to be at the review of the arborist.
Okay.
12 trees with the agreement of the arborist.
Okay. That's your new, that's your new variance request. Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
I think I got it.
Yes, that's the kind of the secretary here.
Let's make sure the secretary's got it. So we're replacing four trees in the front, add eight trees per the review of the arborist, and eight shrubs in the rear also. Correct?
Six trees in front, six trees in back.
Yeah, we're replacing the four in the front, and we're adding eight. So that's 12. There'll be six in the front, six in the back, and then eight shrubberies in the back.
Add six trees in the front and six in the back.
And six shrubs in the back. All upon approval of the arborist. Correct, sir?
Correct.
So total of 16 trees, correct?
12 trees.
12, yeah, 12.
No, well, but he's replacing the four in the front.
Correct, that's part of that 12.
That's part of the 12.
Yes.
Right. The front, six in the rear. Four.
Never just keep climbing.
Bring my fingers and toes down to free J's meat, hope.
I just need someone to make motions now.
I move that a variance be approved based on the applicant's amended request. I will second. I'm sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Who's second?
Discussion.
I did.
Kobe did.
Discussion, did you say?
I said discussion, yes.
I don't find that there was a practical difficulty demonstrated. And I also just still feel like the the variance is too substantial. The code is too new, and we're, you know, going for eight trees versus 70, and I just find that that's not appropriate.
Okay, anybody else? Will the secretary call the roll once he gets?
Judy Anis? Judy Anis?
Yes.
Kobe Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
No.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
David Flager?
No.
Jay Sockman? I'm going to go no also on that.
I'm sorry, what?
No on that, too.
Okay, so your request for your variance was not granted. Your amended variance was not granted, correct? That came out with...
Three to three.
Three to three. It was tied, so it's not... Nothing is going to... It's not granted when it's tied.
So are we able to add some shrubberies?
I wanted to guess you sit down and you sit down and perhaps redo it? Rethink about the number of trees and how you want to do it would be my suggestion.
Are we able to add some trees today and get approval so that we can move forward?
You should always add the ones that died, that you need to have replaced.
I will add the ones that died.
You should definitely add the ones that died, yes.
So, you know, what I'm asking is, I'm trying to walk out of here to let the construction people start the construction. They're ready to go.
Understood.
You know, can I go from 12 trees to 16 trees and from eight shrubs to 12 shrubs?
I think you need to submit a plan to make another request.
You just need... We can authorize you to go ahead and replace the trees that died, but you need to put in a different... If you're not going to subscribe to the existing zoning rules currently, you need to come back with another request because the request that you asked for did not pass.
Right, so it's too late to modify the request for approval tonight? Okay, and if we reduce the size of the addition to 20% of the existing building, then we don't need any approvals. Is that correct?
I think that would be correct.
Correct. Well, the landscaping and the street trees wouldn't apply.
And you can also appeal to the...
Yeah, you can go to the Court of Common, please. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, it came to my attention that this is Chris's last meeting.
Second to last.
Second to last meeting, so wipe the grin off your face. At this time, I would also like to say to the mayor and as a citizen for Bowling Green, and I think we all can take great pride in how well-conducted the eclipse was for the city. It was... Kudos to the city and the county for doing an excellent job and keeping us all safe and able to enjoy the awiness of the eclipse, so thank you. Gentlemen? May I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Don't forget to sign.
No, you can't forget to sign because poor Jay has really worked up...
I move we adjourn.
Earned his salary tonight, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.